All right, everybody. Welcome to the City of Kingman Meeting of the Clean City Commission. It is Thursday, October 16th, 2025. And can we get a roll call, please?
Chair Carpenter.
Here.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Present.
Commissioner Hilton.
Here.
Commissioner Eric.
Present.
Commissioner Bo.
Here.
And Commissioner Salem.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And I want to welcome Hannah Espinoza as the new secretary, recording secretary. And let's do a stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I'll start it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, time for the approval of minutes. Somebody want to make a motion? Did everybody get a chance to read the minutes?
I did read through them. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, do we get a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed? Okay, minutes pass. Call to the public. Those wishing to address the commission should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the repub- from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The commission may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The commission may direct the staff to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. And we have no one... Okay, moving along. Action items. Clean City Commission Event Calendar Update. Kealan.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the commission. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you guys tonight. This is an update of the Clean City Commission Calendar of Events, Discussion, and Possible Action Regarding Any New Scheduled Events. So it looks like some of the upcoming events, well, really the only new thing, I guess, that we, or that I have to report on, is there's a tentative date scheduled for the United Way Cleanup, which is April 4th of 2026. And I think that that could potentially coincide with our Adopt-A-Block Cleanup as well, much like it did this last, last month as well.
Yep.
And then, other than that, I'll certainly take any input, or if anybody's got anything to add, or that they'd like to see placed on the calendar, we can certainly have that discussion.
Commission?
We do have a, a, not toxic waste, that's not the word for it, right?
Has, has waste?
We have one coming up, right? And I always think that that should be on our calendar, too, because it's important for us to share to other people.
November 2nd, thanks.
November 2nd. And then, don't, and we have a free dump, too. Does that have anything to do with the city? No, but it's still a good thing. The dump has given us a free, free day. Yeah. I don't, I didn't bring that in?
And just to confirm, Ed, the has-waste cleanup, or has-material drop-off is still at Public Works, County Public Works?
Gotcha.
Okay.
Does anybody have anything else to add? To the calendar? So, yeah, we have the First Friday coming up again, one more time this year. Yeah, that's always fun. It's fun, just stand there and give stuff away, and promote things. Okay, and we have any word about the expo that they do every year?
No, we don't, at least at this point, but as soon as we do, we can send out an email update. We just had the Citizens Academy this last week, but I don't think they've scheduled a date yet for the, for the expo.
All right. So, we're done with comments. Do we have any motions? Do we accept the calendar as is? Do we don't need to do a motion here? Okay. Item B, then? Clean City Commission Adopt-A-Block Program Update.
A lot of order there. I apologize about that. This, excuse me, "Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Adopt-A-Block Program." Staff has not received, or, excuse me, have received one new application and have approved it. The adopted areas in the downtown Kingman area, no other applications or inquiries have been received since late July.
Can you tell us who that is? Do you know who it is? No? Okay.
That's cool. Certainly follow up with an email, though.
I just hope that some things I do about that has, you know, even if it's months down the road, that somebody will think about it, yeah. Because I went to a lot of places, talked about it, so, yeah.
Anybody have any questions or comments regarding the Adopt-A-Block? I'd have to say that the more we promote it, the more it just gets around and people think about it. I like it being on the digital billboards, so people might see that again. You know, we still want to do that, you know, kind of thing, you know? So...
Mr. Chairman, through the chairs. There's some old signs downtown that this block was, is being cleaned by so-and-so and so-and-so. We were parking under one the other day. Are they still doing any of that, where they put a sign up where is, the block is adopted by a certain organization?
As far as I know, they are, but I would need to follow up with you to confirm that. But, yeah, as far as I know, the signs are still up.
Down by the bad gas shop, across the street by the school, there's one that's, and the one, reason we commented on it was because it's the Democratic Party that has adopted it, but we've never seen anybody doing any cleanup and seen any literature on where they can get a sign up. So they asked me to ask you guys where they could get a sign if they want to adopt a block.
I can speak to that a little bit. It is in the application process, and signs are available if they choose to purchase them. They're $65 per sign.
The Democratic Club did do a cleanup last month, and then, to follow up, and Nucor's doing one next week as well, so those that are active are still continuing, getting ahold of us, and we're giving out.
Yeah, thank you, Ed. It would be nice if we were notified when they're doing cleanup, so we can go down and say, "Thanks," you know, or at least be aware of them being down there.
I don't think, they don't tell you every time, though, do they?
Yeah, they, they nor, they normally do, because they have to kind of get the supplies from us.
Okay, yeah, that would be nice if we knew.
I'm looking at Ed and Donna, because they must tell Ed and Donna. To your point, they don't, I, I don't necessarily get notified of that, but the, the procedure has always been Ed and Donna, so...
And Donna was great about getting me a whole list of who, who used to be, who is now, things like that. And I think it's in here somewhere, but I was looking at it. That was nice of her to give me that, because I wanted to know, too, how many people were active and still doing it.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Kealan? Okay. Then, moving along, item C, action item C is Clean City Commission Meeting Frequency.
Thank you, Chairman Carpenter. Commissioner Eric has requested that the Clean City Commission consider changing its meeting frequency to every two months. If this change is made, the Clean City Commission will meet in January, March, May, July, September, and November on the third Thursday of the month at 5:00 p.m. There not, excuse me, there do not appear to be any conflicts with any other boards or commissions' meeting time, so the council chamber should be available. Staff would request that if the new schedule is approved, that it begin in January of 2026.
All right. Open for questions or comments?
Yeah, so I can take the lead on this one.
Okay.
The reason I brought this up wasn't just to make more cost for the city or waste anyone's time. If we did this, I would implore that we become more proactive in what we do, and kind of more inventive, you know, come up with some more creative ideas that, you know, makes sense to have more meetings, so that we can get stuff approved quicker, and we don't have to wait three months. This next item, item D, is due to a meeting in April, and I wasn't able to be here on the July meeting, so I have to wait till October to present it. And it's just, it's only an extra two meetings, if you think about it. Right now, we're doing four meetings a year. It would just be six meetings a year, and I think I can spare two hours, so that's where I'm coming from. I'm open to comments.
I totally agree with you.
I mean, all the other commissions meet monthly, so...
Exactly. And I, and I talked to some other people at the city, too, just to say, "Use me. Give me something to do. I'm here to help you." Not, I, I mean, I'm old, so going out on the street in the heat and picking up trash once a year, not really what I want to do, but I can be a sign policeman. I can be, you know, there's lots of things I can do. I got a truck. I can pick up some people's signs that aren't supposed to be thrown back in my truck. I got no problem at all. So, you know, there's, there's certain things that I can do to, and so, yeah.
Oh, we appreciate that. Thank you.
I, I do have a question.
Commissioner Salem?
Are we able to have special meetings if there's an event that comes up, and we don't have a meeting scheduled until like a month or two? Are we able to have special meetings, so that can be approved?
Yes, that, that is correct. If somebody, sorry, Chairperson Salem, there, there is the opportunity, for instance, if something comes up that, you know, maybe the commission doesn't feel like it can wait or needs to take some sort of priority or precedence, that a special meeting can be called.
Can you elaborate on what's required for a special meeting? Is it just, "Hey, we're having a meeting. Get downtown"?
Yes, and, and availability, I think, of the, the room, and, you know, those, those type of formalities. But other than that, yeah, I think it's something that we would coordinate with Annie, to establish, sorry.
So, we have to have an agenda about two weeks in advance before, so it has to, you can tell us the first time in the month, and we can establish a special meeting.
So, similar to the requirements of what it takes, you know, for us to post the agendas for the, the normal meetings, would also be the same requirement for the open meeting laws, to meet the open meeting law requirements for a special meeting?
And as a commissioner, I would go to Chairperson Randy, and he would reach out to staff to set up that special meeting, correct?
Yes.
Just clarifying.
Yep, nope, good question.
Commissioner Bo?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Do you have any comments or questions?
Mine was answered last time.
Okay.
I, I have a, a problem with adding extra time onto my, my schedule. I think that an, an emergency meeting would be the way to go. I don't think we fill the enti, we don't need those extra meetings. We don't have enough now to, to really warrant the time for the, especially the city employees who have to come in. So I think having a calling a special meeting would be the way to go.
Yeah, my two cents on it is, I don't mind doing two extra meetings. Every, you know, do a meeting every other month, as long as it brings our team closer together, and we could get stuff done, and it directly results in a cleaner city. That's pretty much it. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
I have one more question. If we tried it out, and it didn't work out, could we go back?
Absolutely could, yeah.
And it would start next year?
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, you make a motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we change Clean City Commission Meeting Frequency to bimonthly, starting in January 2026.
Okay. All those in favor?
Got to have a second.
Oh, got to have a second, I'm sorry.
Yep, thanks.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So what was that? You have three.
Can I?
Oh, it passes? Did you have a comment?
Can we add to it that if there's not enough that's brought up during that time, during those meetings, put, put it in there that we can change it back to quarterly or every two months? Can we add that in there?
I have no problem amending my motion to have a sundown on it. I would like to make a motion to have a trial year with bimonthly meetings starting January 2026, for the third Thursday of January, March, May, July, September? Wait, November?
Yep.
I think I nailed it.
You got it.
All right. Starting January 2026.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Moving along. Item D, Kingman Youth Advisory Council Collaboration. I'm excited about this one.
Thank you, Chairman Carpenter. At the April 17th, 2025, regular meeting, Commissioner Eric was appointed to contact the Kayak about a possible collaboration between their council and the Clean City Commission. Commissioner Eric attended Kayak's meeting on April 23rd, 2025, and discussed collaborating on an Adopt-A-Highway Cleanup and/or an Earth Day Event in 2026. The Clean City Commission could discuss collaborating on an Adopt-A-Highway Cleanup in the fall or planning an Earth Day Event for 2026.
All right, so, yeah, I got to meet with many kids from our high schools and some from homeschool programs in our community, and I was blown away with how enthusiastic, energetic, laser-focused, and determined they were to have a very healthy, functioning coun, council. They were ecstatic to have us. They had different presentations going on. They had, let me go over my notes. It's been a minute. They also, so, I explained to them what Clean City Commission was, what we do, and how we have our annual cleanup. I told them that we would like to collaborate with them on our cleanups, but also coordinate with them so that we don't have conflicting dates, so that they can attend our cleanups, and we can advertise their cleanups or go to their cleanups ourselves. In the meantime... So, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Annie was, only Kingman Academy High School and Lee Williams were sitting at the table along with some homeschoolers. Kingman High School was absent from the table. They want to fix that. I mentioned that we would like to invite them specifically to our Adopt-A-Highway Event and collaborate on Earth Day Event for 2026. No specifics, but a couple ideas that were floated included planting trees along with Adopt-A-Lot Programs, and cleaning of empty lots around each respective school. That was another idea. This was just a beginning, like a stepping stone. This could blossom into more ideas as we progressed, and we built that bond together. And also, Wayne will be happy about this one. We were talking a lot about education and water conservation, especially around our community garden, and emphasizing more greenery in our city. Annie said she would coordinate with Donna to arrange next steps. Also, oh, also, the lovely ladies from Kingman 66 Special Olympics were there, and they were looking for more volunteer events that they could attend, including cleanups. And that kind of sparked a whole nother, "Who else can we invite?" and other organizations, and... It's, this opens, especially when we have so much young blood coming into the system, there's plenty of ideas that we could do. Not, I, I kind of want to pass the ball to Dana, Commissioner Bo, for her ideas that she has, and I'll, I'll pass it over.
Commissioner Bo?
I thought about events, different things that we could do to encourage more participation and understanding of what the Clean City is. And so I came up with something like an art or an essay contest for the Clean City through the schools, businesses, nonprofits, whoever, you know, wants to participate. We could do, for essays, what does a clean city mean to me? What is a clean city? How to keep a clean city, a city clean? What can I do to keep my city clean? For art, we could do something like drawings or paintings or something along that line of people working, keeping their, their city clean, pictures of clean parks, streets, and neighborhoods there. You know, ideas of what is a clean city. And then we would have some judges, you know, decide. And, you know, maybe they could, we would have the artwork or an essay or both published on the city website, at the city offices. And then also offer gift cards, plus maybe a city swag bag, celebration award to the winners, something along that line.
If I could just interrupt, can we make sure we're speaking into our microphones, please? Thank you.
Can, can, are we allowed, if we did something like this, to give money or give things to people? Is that, because that's a, can be a violation sometimes?
Yeah, I'd have to clarify with, sorry, Commissioner Hilton. I'd need to clarify with our attorney, but I don't think so. But, let me, let me get some clarification.
If I sponsored it, I could give something. The city wouldn't have to. I could, and I would be happy to do that. I think that's a wonderful idea. And I think that with your art, you could probably get together with the Art Hub and have them do one of their monthly art shows when they open it up, probably with that in it.
Or for First Fridays.
Yeah.
At our booth.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
Great idea.
Anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to work with you.
We have a table.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
It's a busy table.
Clean table.
So, yeah. Just to clarify a few things. Pre-COVID, we did have a large presence in the schools as far as art contests and essays. And also, we gave away money to do gardening-type projects and things like that in some of the schools. So, there is a precedent for that, and there is a precedent for giving, for giving, awarding money. We gave gift cards. We gave...
Oh, that's wonderful.
Different things like that, so those things are possible. I can. I need to do some research to find, it's, because it's been several years now, because we never went, had the opportunity to go back after COVID.
Oh, that's, that's great.
It's time to go back. So, one more thing I was also, I wanted to add on, was also, to maybe have presentations here and get community groups here in front of us, see what they need. Maybe we can connect them to someone else that needs something. Maybe if they need manpower, and we know someone who's looking for volunteer groups, we can coordinate them to work together. I think Clean City Commission is at the center of community, and I think it's a good hub for all the spokes.
Awesome. I like your ideas, brother. Fantastic. So, does anybody else have any comments or questions or ideas that we could talk about?
So, would we just invite Kayak to our next meeting? Would that be the next step?
Yeah. Do we need to make a motion for that, to, to invite them? Okay.
If that's what you choose to do, if you have, if you want to talk with them about partnering with cleanups?
I also had one more thing I wanted to talk about that is related to this, but it's, it's regarding another commission. I don't want to break any rules. So I didn't know if I should wait till a request for future reports and updates?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, then, yeah, I guess we can make a motion when you want.
Okay. Want to make a motion?
Okay. I motion that we invite Kayak to our January 2026 meeting. To, yes.
I'm sorry.
No.
You're in the middle of your motion. Can we just say that, that monthly, we can invite somebody to talk and have that open? Or does it have to be this specific person every, so that it can be open for the next month or the next month?
It would be best for it to be agendized. I'm sorry. We would need to agendize the report, so as long as we knew and if... We would need to agendize the report, so as long as we knew in advance so that we could get it on the agenda.
But if he puts on here that we can do it, as long as somebody within two weeks on here calls and says, hey, I've got these people, can we put them on the agenda?
We're getting off the topic. Actually, we're getting a little bit off the topic. We should deal with the Kayak stuff first. And because it wasn't agendized to
Make a speaking slot.
To make
So because we didn't make a speaker slot and we're talking about buying Kayak, we can only talk about Kayak coming to the January meeting. So I would like to make a motion to invite Kayak to our January twenty twenty sixth meeting to present possible opportunities for Earth Day and Adopta Highway and potentially Adopta Block programs.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Great idea. Okay. So, reports.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, going back to your comment, if you want them to come and talk to us, you can always do it on Call to the Public. They could get their word in if they wanted to, because that's open time. They don't have to be on the agenda. Call to the Public is open.
It's only three minutes, right?
Yes, but it would be enough for, to ask for them to come up and say, we'd like to get on your agenda for the next meeting. We're, we're really off the topic.
Then that's four, that's another four months.
We're off the topic. We need to stop because we're off the topic. I'm sorry.
Okay. Item four, uh, reports. Kealan?
Thank you Commissioner Carpenter, uh, Chairman Carpenter, rather, sorry. Uh, the Neighborhood Services Division will provide an update and report, and Sean is here with us, so I'll turn some time over to him.
Hey, Sean.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
How's everybody this evening?
Good.
Um, there is a lot to report, but not a lot to report. So, um, traditionally, when we've come in here and done this, we've just provided you guys some statistics of where we're at in our, in our current workload. Um, currently, um, from year to date, so from January of this year to today, we have, um, opened approximately three hundred and sixty-eight cases. We've closed through voluntary compliance, two hundred and thirty-two of those cases. We have six cases currently that have been forwarded over to the Attorney's Office for further, um, enforcement through the court system, and we have five that are currently being dealt with in the court system as well. Um, and then we have another two abatement, now, yeah, two abatements currently that we have on our radar to complete that's been ordered by the court. Uh, one of them, it's looking like we're actually going to get voluntary compliance, so that's going to be money saved, um, for the city. Um, the next thing to talk about is going to be staffing with Neighborhood Services. Um, our, our normal staffing is two. I believe the last time that I did a presentation here, we were down to one. Uh, in that time, we were back up to two. And then we were back down to one. So it's kind of a, kind of a, a, a difficult thing to really get our program up and running when we're not fully staffed. Um, so, I, I we hope and think that, um, at this point, where we're at with our staffing and the people that are in place, that we're going to be able to move forward and really hit the ground running. Um, one of the things that I, I think you guys will find, um, to, to be, um, interesting and well, um, we, we've always sought out and tried to come up with ways to decrease the amount of time it takes for our program. Um, and we've, we've, we've gone different routes in our enforcement. Um, you know, state statute requires us to notify and they have thirty days, and then based upon that, we move forward. Um, Judge Singer kind of got wind of that and kind of, uh, stepped up and said, hey, what if we created a community court? Right? So we're currently in the process of creating a community court to where that, that entire session of court, once a month, will be dated, dedicated completely to our cases. Um, so with that, uh, we've, we've also been able to, um, get the blessing and the go-ahead and everything from council to where, uh, we will be able to issue citations. And so that's how, that, that's going to be the mechanism of getting the court process started. Um, so essentially how that, at this point, how that will look is, uh, notice of violation will be served. They'll have thirty days. At the end of that thirty days, they'll be issued a citation, and within, uh, within approximately another thirty days, they'll, they'll be in front of the judge in the court. Um, so if you could, you can imagine the timeframe of, uh, currently, we're looking at ninety to a hundred and twenty days before, before we're possibly, depending upon the Attorney's Office's caseload, uh, going before the judge, right? Um, we're looking at having a dedicated day to right around sixtieth days from the initial complaint and us establishing that it is a violation, that they'll be in front of the judge in the court. Um, so that's, that's what we've come up with, uh, to reduce the timeframe, and hopefully we can, we can really get going on this. Um, so, uh, I'm open for any questions, if anybody has any questions or anything for me today.
Uh, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, does this pertain to open fields as well?
To, to some degree, right? So we, we use discretion when it comes to open fields. Now, if there's junk and trash and things like that, 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 that's, that's a no-brainer, right? Absolutely. We're going to move forward with whatever enforcement action we have. Now, when we start talking about weeds and it's an open lot, right? Something we have to remind people of on a daily basis is we live in the desert and it is natural vegetation, right? And unless it's causing some type of, of hazard outside of its natural state or something like that, the only thing that we're most likely going to do is we're going to ensure that those weeds are not encroaching within to the right of way or somebody, not even somebody else's property, because we don't really have that authority. So outside of that, on an open lot, we're not going to take much action.
So, um, my question was like, for, for lots that are right next to big box stores and big shopping centers, it's not their fault the trash is there. It's, it all originated from the shopping centers. You know, what do you do?
So, um, I'm, I'm going to tell you what we've been told by the, the law people, attorneys and the judges. Um, it, it's, it's pretty simple. May, may seem pretty harsh, prove that it came from there. Right? And, and that, that's the issue that, that we have, is we, we have to treat these, and we do treat these, just like any other criminal investigation, because this is a criminal offense, right? We're not just talking, you get a citation and you pay a fine. We're, we're talking about, you, you are being charged with an actual misdemeanor. So if we can't prove beyond a reasonable doubt that, that that stuff came from that specific place or individual, we, we really can't take a lot of action.
Just go pick up the bags that have the, the names on them.
Uh, do you have, and, and here's what's going to happen, right? It's going to be argued with you that, hey, do you have grocery bags in your house?
Oh, wow, yeah.
Right? And so, so that's, that's what's, that's what's going to come down. Um, that absolutely is an issue. Um, i- it's very, very difficult for us to directly hold these stores accountable for that, because when we, when we start talking about criminal charges, we start talking about attorneys, and we start talking about trials and things like that.
How about another angle? Could we encourage shopping center owners to put up fencing to stop that trash from going to the neighbor's property?
We absolutely can encourage that. However, we also have to look at, is that something that's feasible? Do we want fences around our shopping centers like that? I mean, there, there's, there's a lot of di- lot, lot of different things that come into play. Um, for, for instance, uh, let's just talk, we all know about the, uh, entrance to Walmart that, off of airway. That field right there is forever getting filled with trash, everything else that gets brought in from there, right? And so let's just talk between the freeway and that point, right? There's how many stores in there, right? So how, how do we, we can't just go and charge all of these stores and say, oh, hey, you guys are all guilty, right? We can't, we can't do that. Um, but what we, what we can do and what we have done with that property is we've been in contact with the property owner, and, and it's kind of one of those, one of those situations to where we know it's not them, but it, it is, it is their property. So ultimately, it, the way the, the law works and everything else, wherever that trash is and where it lies, that's whose responsibility it is regardless.
Even if it's on the outside of their fence?
Correct. Yep. Because that, that fence
The burden of the law.
Even, even if it was not on their property, was in the right of way at that location, uh, the ordinance, the way it reads, it is still their responsibility for anything that abuts up to their property that's right of way for them to maintain. So, um, yeah, I, I think that there's been, uh, pretty vast improvement on at least that property. Um, but we don't always get the same response from property owners when we reach out and say, hey, we got an issue. Can we come up with a solution? Right? Fortunately, that particular property owner, um, has staff that they can send out and, and take care of that issue on a very frequent problem or ve- very, uh, frequent basis, but tha- that's not the case. That's not the case all the time, so.
Well, if we can gain access to those fields, I, I wouldn't mind going picking trash up out of a field. That'd be great. We'd get a whole bunch of people. Uh, we picked up a field over by the library that, I, maybe that's city property though.
Yeah, that's actually county property, but yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we cleaned that one up real well.
So with, with all of this, and I wasn't going to say a whole lot, because then you'll hold me to the wire and I don't want that, right? Um, we do have other ideas. Once this program that we're working on with the Community Court is up and going, um, we're, we're looking at potential expansion with staff. Uh, but then we're also looking at other avenues at how we can achieve what it is we're needing to achieve without it having to be staff. And so hearing some of the things that have been said today from commissioners, um, there's, uh, not going to say it's going to happen, right? But there's a pretty large, uh, possibility that, uh, we will be coming up with some type of volunteer program that, um, assists in a lot of different ways with the actual enforcement side of things, as well as doing these cleanups and things that you guys are talking about. So it's something that is on the radar. Where exactly on the radar, I can't tell you that. Uh, but it is something that we, you know, I, I've long, long time thought, why is it that we're trying to use our staff hours and everything else to try and go out and create these groups to, to go and do these things when we, we have a commission here that we can utilize, right? And so again, that's something that is on our radar, right? We're, we're just not there yet. So we've been doing a lot of work within our department.
Happy to hear that.
A lot of work within our department, um, the building side of things, the planning and zoning sides. We've just completed a complete rewrite of our, of our zoning code, which also transitions over into the Neighborhood Services side, because Neighborhood Services is who is enforcing that as well. So we're, we're trying to take things one step at a time, and we are moving in that direction, and we do have some ideas on some ways to get this commission involved in what we do.
Awesome. That's exciting.
I, I have a question. Um, is the city able to use people that are on probation or the inmates? Are you able to work with that? Is that, um, out of the agenda topic? Am I, can I go ahead and talk about this?
I, I can absolutely answer that. Uh, there's two answers to that. Number one is yes, and number two is no. Right? So there are a lot of parameters that become involved in that, right? Um, because in, in doing that, we as a city, if we're going to do that, we then have to get our staff certified to be able to supervise them, which is something that's completely outside of the scope, right? Um, the, the probation department will do that to some degree. But then we, then we look in, we take into consideration where this, wh- where our real need is for that, and that's right in and around residential properties. And that, that could has a high potential to not be good, right?
I'm talking more about the open fields?
Uh, it, it's something we can look into, but again, taking those, those people going out and doing that for us, they still have to abide by the same rules we do. So you as a citizen going out and doing that is completely different than me as a staff member of the city going out and doing that in that capacity, right? I cannot enter onto somebody's property. I cannot take something from somebody's property, regardless of if it's trash or not, wi- without that full-on permission from that proper, property owner. And in, in actuality, you as a citizen are in the same boat, however, you're taking on your own liability, right? So there's some, some give and take when it comes to that. Is it possible? Yes, but not without some, some work and contact with property owners and things like that.
Can I jump on that real quick?
Absolutely.
And, um, I know one Parks and Rec used to use, um, inmates on the golf course to help clean up and, and, and seed and maintenance and stuff like that. And the county used them on the highways, and I believe after COVID, all of that just went away.
Right, but here's, here's the other piece of that too, is what you're talking about is the city actually paid to have those people there, right? We actually paid for that labor to, to the state prison system. So, uh, uh, again, we're, we're, it, it appears as if, oh, these people are just going out there to work off their, their sentence and things like that. It's not, it's not always the case. Um, so again, it, it does make things more convoluted and not as easy as it may seem.
I have a question. I have curiosity.
Yes.
Do you know if it was state prison wages or minimum hour wages?
So, um, and Eddie could probably help with that, because they, they helped, so, um,
Just out of curiosity, don't
So again, Eric, like you had said, uh, prior to COVID, we personally had them in solid ways. We had some out of public works. At that particular time, you know, years have gone by. Uh, it was only fifty cents an hour, so it was very beneficial for my department, because we could utilize them so much. Uh, to answer your question, uh, basically, they were only allowed to go on, uh, city streets, uh, city right-ofways. We weren't allowed to take an inmate onto a personal property. Uh, so when we did bulk trash, stuff like that, we had them, they had to have it out to the curb, which is a city easement and stuff like that. But fifty cents an hour, it worked out real well. But again, like you had mentioned, COVID came along and they shut everything down, and that's pretty much been where it's at. Currently right now, the state is now just getting them back. You'll see a couple crews. The state's got some going out and around, so maybe if it makes a way back our way, then maybe we could jump on board.
Thank you, Ms. Tep.
And maybe can help with his program, okay?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Getting back to the buildings and things like that, um, there are some buildings, I think.
When it's green. There you go.
I'm dimly aware once again, but that's okay. Um, there are buildings that are privately owned that are not cared for at all. On Sycamore, for example, across from my dentist's office, there's a, a doctor's office. And it's privately owned, but it's just trashy. I mean, everything is falling apart on this place. Around, around it is, you know, just, it's weeds and I've seen homeless people there. And so
Here, here's what I'll say, give me an address.
Okay.
Right? If you forward an address on to me, and, I mean, this isn't, this isn't a practice that I want to uh, bestow upon the commission of, you know, calling these things in, but if it, if it's something as you're describing, by all means, um, get, get that over to us. Um, and again, you, we, we have, we have to what we're challenged with in Neighborhood Services is making that assessment of what truly is a nuisance and what truly is personal preference, right? So again, what is one person's treasure is another person's junk, right? If that makes sense, so, um, w- we, we have, we have a way of applying the codes and whatnot kind of straight across the board um, to where we don't have to ride that line. Um, so if it is, if it is something that we can take action on, we absolutely will.
Sean, can I, um, just ask for a little elaboration on, we have a full commission here minus one, but everyone's super enthusiastic, and what exactly falls into your domain? Everything from dog barking to parking violations?
Essentially, if it has to do with an animal, we don't do that.
Yeah.
Uh, parking violations is not within us. What we mainly stick with is, um, zoning violations, um, dilapidated building violations, and then public nuisances. Um, dilapidated building violations and then public nuisances um on private property and with in some things within the right of way, but majority of the stuff, we're dealing with private property. To where the police department and other departments are dealing with things within the right of way. Uh, but we we do not deal with animals at all. Uh, but if if somebody's got trash all over their yard and they're not picking up, or if they've got stuff piled up, or they've got weeds that are in violation of what our ordinances require. Ev- uh, that stuff all is within our scope.
What if they have a floodlight shining into your bedroom?
I wanna say that's uh somewhere else, but uh that is, that is within the zoning code, so that would be neighborhood services.
So, along um Castle Rock, there's that whole line of trailers and just, I mean a lot of it's junky and it looks like it's all fire hazards, a lot of these.
What portion of Castle Rock?
Um, you you just turn off sixty-six and get on to Castle Rock.
Talking about Birdland, I think, just just regular homes.
That is not within the city, so we have, we have no jurisdiction. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you, I didn't know.
You're welcome.
And are you, is the city complaint driven like the county is as far as zoning? And complaints, garbage, et cetera, so it's basically complaint driven, you don't go out and drive around and look for these things?
We we definitely don't have the staff for that, um, being proactive is is something, again, that's on our radar. We are wanting to do that, however, that's not something we're gonna, we're gonna, I I would, I will tell you right now, if we became proactive we are setting ourselves up for drastic failure, right? And we don't have the staff for it, we don't have the time, we don't have, you know, the 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 steps that that we're tra- taking are to hopefully get to that point. Um, but I I I feel like we're a ways off, we're at least I I would say at least a year and a half, if not two years away from becoming proactive now. We are implementing some specific target areas that will be proactive, um, but that's that's just a step towards getting there.
One example of that, there was a store uh over by the graveyard, can you explain? Just so that we understand the process, they got multiple complaints, they got multiple warnings, right, and then they eventually were reactive and they fixed it, right?
Which store?
The weeds and their retention, I don't wanna name a name.
You're talking about the Dollar General.
Okay, you can name it.
Yeah, I will, I have no problem naming the names, um, so.
Just explain the process.
Right, so so essentially, what what the process is, is is proactively, right? Before weeds start growing and everything else, and we as as a division, we went out and we contacted in person every single business along Stockton Hill Road and said basically, hey, weed season is coming up. We will be out here, we will be enforcing, so please do your due diligence and ensure that they don't even start growing, right? Uh, so we went out there and did that, as they started to grow, we went through the season, um, we went out and you know, fairly quickly, uh, we gave, we we issued fifteen day notices, basically stating, hey, you've got fifteen days to take care of this. Um, little little door hangers, here you go, this is what's going on, you got weeds out here, get it taken care of. Uh, we we went out, um, we issued those two properties that there was an issue. And at that fifteen day mark, we then have to we can go the unofficial route or the official route, we start out with the unofficial route and then it becomes official, and we actually created and started cases on those properties, um. I I think that we have, with what you're talking about, I think that we have um, we have definitely come up with a solution on that, um, we have to help those local store managers and whatnot contend with their corporate offices. Um, because when it comes down to us charging those places, we're charging who is right there and in front of us. So it doesn't seem fair for us to charge somebody who has no control over it, right? So I think we've come up, come up with a way to contend with that, um, we've learned what the corporate policies are, and so essentially, we'll be serving notice right out of the gate, right, and that is what fires the corporate offices to do what they need to do to get the people here to take care of it, so um, it i- it's a long drawn out process, but again, as we're moving forward, weed is something that definitely is going to be a part of our citation program as well.
It's very complex, isn't it?
It it's, yes.
I I would like to say that I did call the city on a a a fifty by a hundred lot with a home on it. Regular residential off of Eastern and Louise. They had two Conex boxes, one in the RV gate in the, and then one all the way almost out on the curb, on the dr- on the sidewalk. And was there for, I gave him a long time, he was there for like six months. And I called the city and within a month or so, they were gone. So you guys, I know you do as, you're at work, I appreciate all you do, because
Thank you.
There's a lot of people here, there's no way one person or even two can even, yeah.
I agree, wholeheartedly.
Thank you so much for all that information.
Thank you, absolutely.
I'll wait for your cue, sorry, I was just getting prepared for the next idea.
Oh, recycling update.
Thank you, Chairman Carpenter, and uh if I can, just uh make one quick note, uh uh, I want to make sure that Commissioner Hilton gets her um questions answered, and I think that that can be answered in the um uh, request for future reports and stuff, so, okay, I just wanted to make sure. Uh, with that, uh, the Solidways Superintendent Ed Tapia will present an update and information regarding the recycling program, and I'll turn the time over to Ed.
Thank you. Um, I don't have a whole lot to report, but I think we've got good news, uh. The program is up and going, everything uh has been working slowly. Uh, we're anticipating that people, because it's pay as you go, that they're collecting a lot of recyclables and they'll bring them in at a later date, uh, so, uh let's see, I think we're still waiting for the Conex slash office, that should be arriving in the next couple of weeks, uh. We did order a baler, baler should be here at the end of November. Uh, right now, we're just stockpiling some stuff so that way we can bail it and get it to the appropriate vendor to uh send off to the proper mail, et cetera, but again, just to plug, they're open Thursday, Friday, Saturday from eight to two o'clock, uh, and it's on our city website. If you have any questions, uh, they could email email me as well, uh, just by going to the city website, looking at the recycling um site that's on there and then going from there. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Actually, I have a couple, it's seven fifty-three or seven fifty-eight at a lo- uh.
Seven fifty-three per trip, so if you came in a truck and you filled it up, it would be seven fifty-three. If you just came with a couple little bags, it's still gonna be seven fifty-three per trip.
So I'm curious, that's such an odd amount, so why, why didn't it become like eight dollars, I mean?
Um, we gave, uh, when we did the survey we put out a survey, uh, prior to uh us going to council and giving all that information to council. Um, there was, uh, I believe it was between six and ten dollars, and we left it up to council to determine what figure they wanted to do, and seven fifty-three is what they came up at.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, another question is is there, other than the website, is there any other information out, like what is recyclable? Do you have to take labels off plastics or?
So as far as uh PSAs go, uh, putting that information out there, um our PIO has done one official um report, I believe, in all the miners, the standard, uh, places like that, it went out in there, so if you get any of the newspapers you would have saw it in there and it would have gave our information on that. Uh, we've attended two First Fridays, uh, we've sat with Randy and his crew, uh, they've handed out uh, a tri-fold uh folder that we give out, and we did that, uh, we are now working with, uh a grant company, uh, so this is good news, I can share that with you, they awarded us fifty thousand dollars uh, to put toward the recycling program, uh, so they're now working up, um some sort of PSA that'll go out in all the water bills, and we should be able to reach another twenty-four thousand people that way. So again, it's just a slow process going out, it's word of mouth, uh, we've had some social media uh plugs as well, uh, but, yeah, so if you need anything, if they're watching this, they can always call our office, they can go on the website. And it'll basically tell you, we take aluminum and metal, tin cans, uh, any kind of metal. And then uh type one and type two plastics, and then cardboard, and then all colors of glass. So anything with a lid on it has to be removed, just uh just so we can process it better, so I believe those are all the items. Labels can still be attached, uh, yeah, they haven't given us any factor of that because of the way they process it. You know, it'll come off uh later down the stream.
Great, well, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Mr. Tapia, do you, can you weigh the recyclables? Or do you weigh them, how do you, is it, do you just measure them by truck bed, or how do you weigh cubic volume?
Well, we haven't weighed them yet because we will weigh them when we bail them, so, yeah.
So by January, you'll be able to bail, right?
We're ho- we're hoping to, yeah, so again, it just depends on how much commodity. You know that, uh, you know, plastic's very light, so you can pretty much crush that all day long, and it's gonna take a long time for it to get a bail. So but once we do get a bail, when we send it to our processor, obviously, we will get a tonnage on that, and then we'll be able to document because we gotta keep all those records uh for our grantor as well, to be able to let them know how much, uh how many tons we're uh removing from the landfill.
Donna, can you help me out with this one, um, I want, on our January meeting with Kayak? I would like to talk to them, or we, I want to present the idea that we do an interschool competition with which school gathers the most recyclables, is that something that we could possibly do?
We can definitely talk about that, you would need to, um.
Remember until January?
No, there's a section for you to ask for future uh agenda items.
Would somebody need to pay for that, though?
Where would the funds come from to to put all that tonnage?
You can't talk about this, it's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
So you could ask for it to be an agenda item in January, and we can talk about all this stuff.
Okay, anybody else?
One question for Ed.
No, what I would like to say, Ed, that I thought you did a very professional job um, on social media, the way we, it was very difficult, and um I kept reading through it and I was trying to keep my mouth shut, I did, most likely, but boy, there was a lot of bad press on that.
There is, and like I said, we knew going into that, and I won't spend a whole lot of time on it, and basically, we tried not to you know, elaborate, but the only thing I really thought that was important is because we are a rural town uh, it costs us a lot more to be able to get those products to the final destination, so, uh yes, we are receiving some revenue, but that revenue's already been, uh you know, uh, it's gonna offset our overall costs, so seven fifty-three is still the amount that we have to. We're, we're not like, you know, the social media says we're not making double money on it by far. Yeah, I don't know that there's a recycling anywhere in the United States that's making tons of money, uh, you know, with that, so.
Do you have any updates on what we had discussed before about having one day of trash and one day of recycling for our pickup at our house, at our homes, do you remember discussing that?
Regarding the numbers on the survey?
No, they were, uh, the, and I don't remember who brought that to us, that talked about either having instead of having two days of pickup of just trash, we had one day of trash, one day of recycling, do with it? I guess not, I guess you don't have an update on, okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, I did take the opportunity because I was very happy about the recycling program, um, and I did put information out and share it on social media. Um, I didn't expect some of the responses that I got, they weren't real positive. Is there a a place where people can go and see the breakdown of what the costs are? And and what that, the seven dollars and what is it, twenty-six cents goes to and how it's broken down because people are asking for transparency, I don't know if I'm asking for too much, I'm just speaking for some of the public.
Absolutely, I know that's one of the questions, and we are now working with city manager as well as uh, our finance director and maybe trying to figure out how we can get that information out. But I imagine it's available if anybody wanted to do a records request through the clerk's office, and then they could talk with the finance uh department to be able to get him those numbers.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
More questions?
You bet, thank you.
Didn't have my speaker on there. Okay. Item number five, announcements by commission members. Any announcements?
No. Okay. The, walk me through. Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
Is that the same one we're talking about, and getting, uh, getting it on our agenda to have a speaker? That's what you were gonna talk, okay, that's all I have.
Any announcements?
Thank you.
Appreciation barbecue.
I was gonna commandeer some of the time here because I failed to mention that, so if I may, just, just for a moment, uh thank you for that, Commissioner Eric. Um, yeah, so, uh, what I failed to mention was, there's the commission appreciation barbecue. It's uh scheduled for November thirteenth, uh, between six and seven PM at the City Kingman Surbeck Cliffs Golf Course.
I'll be there. Hopefully, everybody will show up.
And then before we get done with announcements, also, I think.
With a plus one?
Sorry.
You get one plus one or two?
I'll defer to Donna, yeah, one.
One. I'll tell my daughter she has stale. She's kidding. Uh, did, yeah, yep.
Um, I just wanted to give an update, uh, last year that we did, uh, the free curbside pickup, that's gonna be coming out, starting in January, uh, so probably in January, I'll be able to give you more information regarding that, but we're already working, getting those out in the mailers, they'll go out in November, and we'll be able to offer up to five cubic yards cleanup, so can't answer any questions, Donna will get you, but I just wanted to make that announcement.
Um, I had an announcement, uh, Becky Hill with uh Route sixty-six Rotary Club. She come up with a challenge to her club, that you pick up five pieces of trash every day, or the equivalent of like over a week or whatever, and that's her challenge to the club, and that'd be just a challenge for the whole community, it'd be great, everybody get on board, and um, I'll be doing an upcoming or some, one of us can do a a a speaking uh at their club to present what we do and everything, and adopt a block and everything, do promotion. Um, so I gotta wait for a phone call for that, so that's in the future. Anyway, um, I told Becky I'd bring it up in the meeting, that that's a great challenge. Okay, is that it for the announcements? Okay, requests for future reports and updates.
I'll go last.
No, you, I, you.
Okay, um, I would like to request Kayak come to our January meeting to discuss Earth Day twenty twenty-six, a clean hi- uh, clean a highway uh day. Um, their adopt a block or adopt a lot program. And what was last thing, just forgot it. Collaboration? Collaboration, oh, and uh potentially other organizations, the Special Olympics that we can get in with. I feel like there was something in the last one that I was told to save till now. Oh, and the recycling, the school recycling program, and how that would work, be penciled out. And I have one more unrelated request, um, I was wondering what's going on with Channel Four. And if that's still a thing, if that exists or not, and if there's anything being broadcast. And also if we have any live cameras around our city that we could feed into our YouTube channel. Just so people have some cool background noise and music if, or views when they don't wanna listen to anything in particular. Show how beautiful our city is.
Hmm. Like relaxing jazz music or something?
Something, no copyright.
No ambience?
No copyright infringement, we're good. Thank you, and thank you staff for everything.
Yeah, for sure, um, any other uh, requests?
Oh, yes. Um, I would also like to look into contacting Parks and Rec, uh, the Parks and Rec Commission about possibly collaborating on a cleanup with them. Because I know that they were talking about something like that. So I didn't know what the process of reaching out to another commission is with their board and their votes and everything, so, in timing.
We can reach out and then offer information as an agenda item in the next meeting.
Just ask, if you could just ask Sarah if there's anything she wants to talk about?
Sure.
And see if they're ready yet.
Okay.
Then uh, then we can go from there. If not, then no big deal.
Okay.
Just invite them to Earth Day.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have something to say?
Well, I, is there any way that we could add to the agenda? Just a spot in there for people to come to speakers, like as a s- a speaker? Just so that it would be there every time we met, and if there wasn't one, then we just put no. But if there is one, then we, one of us will contact you two weeks before I have this speaker that wants to come in, or?
We can put that on the agenda, next agenda to talk about, and you can decide at that time.
All right, thank you.
Uh huh.
Yeah, my request should just, would just be to send emails out for every cleanup that's gonna be happening with whatever group and collaboration, just so we're all on the same page with it.
So you would like that to be an agenda item for next meeting?
Sure, just to make sure that we're all on the same page and we're all getting the information so we could. So we could be there, I mean, for the Clean City Commission to be involved with cleanups with uh, Kayak and everybody.
Yeah, we can't discuss it now, but we can definitely put it on as an agenda item.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, and and that, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion, to adjourn.
Second, all in favor? Aye. No?